Hey, so good morning, everybody. There's my, there's my colleagues. Someday when I get to, I will let everybody know that my colleagues are wearing suits and ties in their offices today. So, thank you guys for, for coming here. We're taking off our masks, as everyone already is aware. This thing continues to go on, so we are practicing safe distancing from each other.
We've got more budget practice on water.
But, we're saving water. So, thank you guys for joining us. For our, our internet friends, they, they can't see, but soon, someday, they'll be able to see that you are, are here with us, not just in spirit. So, we are going to get started today. We are open for business. Item number one is the invocation. The invocation and pledge today is being provided by Supervisor Gallardo. So Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the phone, we have one of our very own Justice of the Peace. He is our downtown JP in the Downtown Justice Court. Arica Medina Choa is on the phone, and he will lead us in the invocation and our pledge. And if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to reserve my comments in regards to our, our fearless judge here, and after we do our, our invocation and pledge.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we do have Mr. Medina on the phone?
Yeah.
Yes, he is on the phone?
Thank you, thank you very much, Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Judge. I will ask everybody to please rise. Thank you for joining us today. Please rise.
Thank you. Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for blessing us with good health during this pandemic. Please give us the strength to make good decisions and establish policies that will benefit all the residents of our community. Lord, guide us in this meeting to be productive and effective leaders. Unify us so that we can live in harmony and appreciate the good in all of us. Lord, we place our hearts and our minds in your hands so that you can guide us in our hope for a better future. Lord, we serve all individuals, and in doing so, we serve you. Gracias por otorgarnos tantas bendiciones. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all, and please have a great meeting.
Thank you, Judge Medina. I appreciate it. Steve, anything to say?
Thank you. Real quickly, Judge, I know you're really busy. I just want to thank you once again for, for leading us off in today's board meeting. Mr. Chairman members, I've known Arica Medina, Judge Medina, for a very long time. He is not only a colleague here at the county with us, but he is a dear friend. There's a couple of things that many of you may not know about Judge Medina. I got to know Judge Medina at the beginning, really, I really got to know him really well. He was appointed as the first executive director of the Independent Redistricting Commission when it was first established. And so, it was a whole new commission, as you remember. They were in charge of redrawing our congressional legislative lines, and Judge Medina was the executive director at that time. So, I got a chance to know him well then, and, and even after his tenure there at the IRC Commission, he's moved on to do some great things around housing. He was the executive director of the Arizona Fair Housing Center, really pushing back and, and advocating against housing discrimination. He's also previously served as city managers in a couple municipalities, not only in California, but in Arizona. So, he really has dedicated his life to public service. I had the honors, this whole board had the honors of, of appointing Mr. Medina to a judgeship back, I believe it was 2017, if I'm not mistaken. One of our first appointments, we were able to appoint Mr. Medina as the new Justice of the Peace in downtown. So, he has just done tremendous work, and as we start off in September, it's Hispanic Heritage Month. We're coming into Hispanic Heritage Month, so we sat here, Chris and I and Dave, we sat here and we started thinking, who would we get to really highlight? And someone who's really been a pillar to the community is, is Judge Medina. So, thank you, Judge Medina, for coming and being part of this particular board meeting. We appreciate your service, and thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Gallardo, and thank you all the honorable members of the supervisors. All of the participants will have a great meeting today, and you take care.
Thank you, Judge. Okay, with that, we will now move on to item number four. Oh, no, we won't. I'll go to back, I got ahead of myself. We, now is the time for the roll call, so Ms. Fran McCurry, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers.
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Chukri.
Here.
Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Hickman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Next, under Pet Showcase by Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. Rocco, as you see on the screen, is one of many dogs we'd love to see find his forever home. This beautiful chocolate pitty lab mix has been waiting here since June 15th, which feels like a very long time to such a good boy. Rocco is about four years old, which is a wonderful age to adopt. He's young enough to still spend most of his life with you, while at the same time, he's had a chance to settle down. I know that, having puppies in our house. He already knows a couple basics, basic commands, and is playful and energetic. He also is very friendly with people, loves to get attention, and leans into petting. Rocco would like to be the only dog at home and have all your attention to himself if you've, if you're ready to meet Rocco and fall in love with him, because, I mean, really, look at that face. You can look, book an appointment to see him at Pets Maricopa, pets.maricopa.gov. Our Empty the Shelter event ended on Monday, August 31st, but we have an upcoming Labor Day special starting this Friday through Monday. Most animals are only $25 or $50, depending on their size. Puppies and shelter superheroes are excluded. And today, we're going to roll to the next slide. We're going to talk a little bit about a success story. This is Gus. We received an update on Gus. There's the attached photo. A 10-year-old dog that was adopted in June. The, the new owner put, "We went down to ACC and met Gus and the wonderful lady who showed him to us. That lady, whoever she was, was kind, empathetic towards Gus, and I could see she really cared. She encouraged without being pushy. In short, she was his advocate, and we very much appreciated her thoughts and her caring nature. Gus has been home for almost 12 weeks. He stopped shaking after two days. He sleeps in the bedroom with us and the other dogs. Has a great personality, and we would call him Gus the Explorer. He wags his tail and sometimes run when he plays. His limp seems to not be so bad anymore, and he really seems happy." So, that's a good success story for Gus, and it looks like he has a nice yard, too. So, with that, Fran, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe I have any corrections. There may be a change in the planning and zoning section, as I believe someone has asked for a continuance, but I believe we'll get to that.
Okay.
When we come there.
Yeah, I have a note there, so I think I know what you're talking about. Great. Okay, we'll move on to next. Number five is the Unity Pledge Proclamation. And I'm going to do something a little bit out of order today. This came up, and actually, I kind of took notice about it through our county attorney, Alistair Adele, and she made the pledge and is doing some wonderful things in the county attorney's office. And Supervisor Gates gave me a call one day and said, "This is something that I would like to get behind and have the board take a look at." So, he, I know he worked closely with District Five on this, and hopefully, they'll make some comments towards that, but I'm going to, I'm going to turn things over to Supervisor Gates.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thanks for taking my phone call, and as you always do, and, and for placing this item on the agenda. I think this is really important, and it is about unity. Maybe if I could just say a couple words before I go ahead and, and read the proclamation, if that'd be all right?
Sure.
You know, unity is, is something that's very important to me. It's a very important concept, and now more than ever. You know, we are asked to unify on various levels, right? When we have a crisis in our family, we unify. When we have an issue in the community, maybe a disaster, we come together, we unify. And certainly, there's no better example of that than what has happened over the last six months, as this board, the governor, public health, and others around Maricopa County have unified to tackle a, the first, you know, pandemic that we've dealt with in 100 years. And unity is something that progresses over time in society, and I think another good example of that is the inclusion and acceptance of the, of our LGBT friends in the community. We've seen a lot of that developing over time, and so, that's why I'm really honored and proud to have the opportunity to read this Unity Pledge Proclamation. And it's a proclamation that states that Arizona's largest community is committed to inclusion in every sense of the word. That's something that I know is very important to joy, inclusion in our workforce, and also inclusion for those people who have chosen to live here. And we know that a lot of people have chosen to, to move here to Maricopa County, being the fastest-growing county the last three years. And so, I believe, and I think everyone here at Maricopa County believes, that when we unify, we can do more together as a team. And I believe that the inclusion of our LGBT friends that this proclamation indicates is going to help us to become an even greater region than we already are. So, with that, Mr. Chair, if I might read the proclamation?
Sure, and after you read the proclamation, I'll, maybe you might want to make a motion to accept it, and I'll, I'll look for, towards my board as well. So, thank you. Yes, please read the proclamation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas civil rights serve as the foundation of our free society and deserve our most vigilant protection, in just the past few years, we've seen remarkable advancements in the rights of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBT Americans. Yet despite these victories, we still have a long road ahead. Bias and discrimination are not easily defeated, and we must remain diligent in our fight for true equality. And whereas in an effort to show support to our LGBT citizens and to showcase Maricopa County as a county welcoming to all people, the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors is proud to sign the One Community Unity Pledge, a public declaration of support for equal treatment in employment, housing, and public accommodations. And whereas, it's time for LGBT inclusive nondiscrimination policies in the workplace, in housing, and in public accommodations. For our part, Maricopa County celebrates diversity and supports workplace equality. We are committed to fostering, cultivating, and preserving a culture of diversity, inclusion, fairness, and equality. And whereas, we celebrate our employees regardless of age, color, disability, ethnicity, family, or marital status, gender identity or expression, language, national origin, physical and mental ability, race, religion, sexual orientation, veteran status, or other characteristics that make our employees unique. And whereas, it is time to ensure equality for all Arizona employees, residents, and consumers, it's the right thing to do. It's good for business, and it's good for the business of Arizona. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors sign the Unity Pledge on behalf of Maricopa County.
Great, thank you. Mr. Supervisor Gates, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve the Unity Pledge Proclamation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you. I would be honored to second the motion and would like to make a comment, if that's okay.
Sure, I think, please, please do so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, let me, let me just say a personal thank you to not only Mr. Gates. Thank you, Mr. Gates, for, for bringing this forward, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, for bringing this on our agenda. This is something that is very near and dear to my heart. As many know, that I am a member of this, the LGBT community. Anytime we are able to take off our political hats and, and, and look at what is right and, and be able to reaffirm to our close to 14,000 county employees that we will treat everyone with respect and dignity, that we welcome everyone in Maricopa County. Angela Huey is a close, personal friend and has dedicated her time and her efforts in an organization called One Community. She has done a great job in bringing this proclamation to many businesses. Some of the biggest corporations in the state of Arizona have signed this Unity Pledge. Businesses across the state have signed this Unity Pledge, and it is time for government to join in and sign this pledge as well, to say that we are open for business. We're here to provide the best services possible for the people of Maricopa County. We welcome all our citizens. We're, we're an open county, and that's what this, this proclamation is all about. Our personnel policies already prohibit discrimination based on age, color, ethnicity, national origin, race, religion, and sexual orientation. Today's proclamation only confirms what our policies have in place now. It says aloud, sends a loud message to employees across Maricopa County that we are open for business, that we do welcome and respect everyone that works very hard here in Maricopa County. So, I am very honored and pleased to see this type of proclamation be brought forward. This isn't about politics. This is about doing the right thing. It's about taking off our partisan hats, as we do on many occasions, and just say, what is in the best interest of, of Maricopa County? What is the best message we can send as a board to not only our 14,000, nearly 14,000 county employees, but the entire Maricopa County constituency? So, this is a, a, a big step in, in, in sending out a message that we are open for business. We have always been open for business, but we are now putting that flagship on, on our, on our county building. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Gates, for, for bringing this forward, and I look forward to voting, resounding yes on this particular proclamation. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Looking at, at Steve. Okay, good, because you guys, I think, are, are hitting it very well for the board. Jack, I didn't know if you had anything, just watching you for a minute. It looked like you wanted to say something, and would you like to say something?
No, I think one of the strengths of our, our entire community is being as inclusive as possible. And so, you know, I used to brag when I was on the Chandler City Council that one of the strengths in Chandler was our diversity. And one of the things that I learned in my career at General Motors is that you really gain strength by being inclusive. You need to have everyone involved in what you're trying to accomplish. And because of that, I, I think that this is a, is a good proclamation.
Thank you, Jack. Steve would like to say something. Steve Chukri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will be supporting this measure this morning, but I, I think it's important to, to speak to some things that, that weren't mentioned. In my other capacity as the president and CEO of the Arizona Restaurant Association, Angela Huey, who Mr. Gallardo has mentioned, and I go way back, we've known each other a long time, and she wanted me to bring this to them, and I did to my executive board, and they were offended. They were offended because not of what this is stating, but in the 230,000 more or more people we employ in the restaurant industry in Arizona, there, we have a high level of LB, excuse me, LGBT individuals, and they said, "We, we practice this, we practice this every day," right? And, and so, I, I understood it in that regard. But then, if you take it just a step further and you look at discrimination of any kind, who, who, who stands for that? Who stands for discrimination period? And I think that's what this is called. It's not an anti-discrimination pledge. It's, to what Mr. Gates said, it's, it's a unity pledge. And that's, I think, what we all need a little bit more of. There's one fundamental truth, and it's been said time and time again, and that is that we're all God's children. That's what this unity pledge is saying. We're all God's children. We're not here to judge. We're not here to point a finger. We're not here to question. And then, there's this issue of religion and religious beliefs, and how this may trample on religious beliefs. And I think that's been debated, and, and there's case study now, not only here in Arizona, by action taken by our Arizona Supreme Court, but the US Supreme Court, and one's business and their decisions, and how their religion may come into play on such a pledge like this. And I will tell you from personal experience, Mr. Chairman, my, my paternal grandfather was stabbed to death on the streets of Lebanon in front of my dad when he was 13 years old because he was a Catholic. So, I understand religious belief. He took him home on his back to his pregnant mother and three sisters. So, I understand religion. I understand sacrifice because of one's religion, and I, I don't see that applying here. And I think that would have been the biggest controversy for me or inner struggle, but it's, it's not. It's not. So, I, I do support this. I, I understand and respect what Ms. Huey is doing, and this is not only the right step forward for Maricopa County, but really Arizona and the many cities and all of our districts who have adopted such a pledge already. Thank you.
Great. I, you know, it is a wonderful thing to be chairman at this, at this moment. The bad thing is it's during a pandemic. The good thing is I'm surrounded by well-spoken individuals about something like this. So, thank you for all of you guys bringing this home. I knew it was important, it's important to all of us, and I, I look at almost on the business side of this. Discrimination is just not a place, if you're a good businessman, you are trying to entice the best people. I don't care what they look like, sound like, be like. They, we need people to be engaged with their workplaces. They need to be treated well, and they need to know that they are a part of the Maricopa County community, citizens, constituents, voters. There is a place for all of us in this community, and I think that's what this pledge is about for me. So, thank you guys for tying up whatever loose end that there might be. I'm glad it is, it has come during my chairmanship, and I'm glad to support it as well. So, we are ready for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Steve. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. And Fran, I don't know if you have the clean copy of a proclamation to pass around, I, if you could bring that up while we continue to do business. So, thank you, guys. All right. We'll now move on to the planning and zoning, or planning and development. Item numbers six through eight is the Zan Harrow Trails Assurance Agreements and Resolutions for Parcels 34A, 34B, and 34C. I don't, there's, there's Jen Pokorski. It doesn't look like she needs to come up. It sounds like it's going very well in my district, so thank you for that. So, do I hear a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Still under planning and zoning. This is the consent agenda. Let me go down to items 16 and 17. We heard my chief of staff, Scott. Thank you very much. We heard something. He had a phone call late at night, and there has been a request for a continuance on, on 16 and 17. So, it's in my district. Do I hear a motion for continuance to September 16th?
So moved?
I have a, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now, we'll go back to item nine, Azure Canyon Parcel 2, 10 through 13. Zan Harrow Trails is listed on the agenda. 14 is Verdi River Phase 6. 15 is the Bar property, and number 18, the Carroll property. So, a motion to approve items nine, 10 through 13, 14, 15, and 18.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved.
Great. Well, Jack, I'll let you have it then. You tried, so I'll give it to you. So, I have a motion from, from Jack and a, sorry, and a second from Steve. That's the way I heard it. My left ear's working better.
Madam Clerk, that's what you call chairman's privilege. Not accuracy, but privilege.
Jack was all over it. I saw him leaning into his microphone. He wanted to be first, so I'm giving it to him. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I am going to leave off D for the time being and go to items 19, liquor license application A through C. A new license for Senor Taco, Four Points by Sheridan Phoenix South Mountain, and Lotus Garden Chinese Cuisine. Do I hear a motion to accept the liquor license applications of these establishments?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item 19.
Okay, I think, this time, I'm going to give it to Steve Chukri because he beat you, Steve Gallardo. So, I have a motion from Steve Chukri, a second from Steve Gallardo. All in favor, say aye.
Just, Mr. Chair, sorry, just confirming A, 19A through C, right?
Through C, yeah. I think I said that, yeah. I'll get to D in a second. So, we got, I think I heard five ayes. Okay, any, any nays? Okay, great. That, that motion carries. We'll now go to 19C. now go to 19C, which is a special event license for Anthem Rotary Foundation. D, I'm sorry. My eyes. Okay, D. Special event license for Anthem Rotary Foundation. I will turn it over to Supervisor Gates.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is obviously a liquor license for a special event put on by the Anthem Rotary Foundation. And at this point, I'm going to make a motion to continue because I think we're going to be getting some legal advice on how all the governor's various executive orders might relate to this. We want to make sure that we do this properly. I think there's enough time. If we do continue until the September 16th meeting, for them to go forward, if it's allowed under the executive order. So that's my motion to continue.
To continue, and to a date?
To the, to September 16th meeting, correct.
And my assumption is you're in touch with the Anthem Rotary?
Yes.
Okay. So they can understand why we're having a little clip in the road here.
Yes, we are reaching out.
Okay. So we have a motion for continuance on item 19D to September, the September 16th meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Bill. Under statutory hearings, under transportation, 20 to 23, patent easement abandonment, road file number PAB 0132, road file number PAB 0128, road file number PAB 0125, road file number PAB 0114. Fran, are there any emails or written or otherwise comments on items 20 through 23?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to accept items 20 through 23.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Thank you Supervisor Gates. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under county officers, Board of Supervisors, 24, reappointments to the ASU Athletic Facilities District. Under school superintendent, an IGA with Murphy Elementary. Under sheriff, 26, an IGA with Gila County. And 27 is a Victims Rights Grant Funding from the Arizona Attorney General. The board will now consider items 24 through 27.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Chukri.
I would make a motion to approve with a comment.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We got that. Jack Sellers just got under the radar there. So Supervisor Chukri.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kyle and Mr. Fieser are great people. I know both of them very well. And they've been on the board for a while, and I know Joey works, and we all work to keep things moving. And so, I think this goes through 22, 2022. But we might want to look to, and I've spoken to them, they're not going to be surprised by this comment, about maybe having some new ideas as well. And I don't know how many people we get there, but to find individuals. I don't want to have this be a public commentary, but I think we should. I don't know how these folks get appointed. Look to maybe get some new ideas going there at some point, so.
Great.
And that's a tough call I've had to make in my district. As RJ Carden can tell you, I had to make the difficult decision to ask a stapling to step off our parks, but that's how we're doing so well as a county, is to continue to invite new people into the fold and setting the future for us, so.
I agree.
With all due respect, I don't mean no disrespect by that, but I think it's important to mention.
Agree wholeheartedly. It's always nice to see, have other community members wanting to step up into these positions and help us out. So thank you for bringing some vision onto that. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under the judicial branch, under Superior Court, 28 is a law library resolution. The board will now consider item 28.
So moved.
Thank you Supervisor Gates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Supervisor Chukri, thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under county offices, finance, 29, funds, transfers, and warrants, 30, fill the gap. Human resources, 31, IGA with the City of Phoenix, 32, amend and restatement of Maricopa County Benefits Plan, number 33, market ranges. The board will now consider items 29 through 33.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 29 to 33.
Okay, I'll give it to Supervisor Guyardo because he was more specific, and the second to Supervisor Chukri. So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under human services, number 34, grant funds from US Department of Health and Human Services, number 35 through 37, agreements with Native American Connections, Inc., Save the Family Foundation of Arizona, New Leaf, 38 through 41, amend agreements and IGAs with Human Services Campus, Regional Public Transportation Authority, Arizona Department of Housing, Arizona Department of Economic Security. Item 42 is an IGA with the City of Mesa. 43 is a receipt of incentives from Quality First. 44 is a receipt of CARES Act funds. The board will now consider items 34 through 44.
Mr. Chair?
Move approval.
Okay, I'm going to do, I'm going to give it to Zach. I'm sorry, Zach.
Come on up, Zach.
Congratulations, Zach.
Good job. We're almost wearing the same tie today, and you're looking exactly like Jack today, too, so that's great. Okay, motion for Jack. Did you want to say something, Bill?
Yeah, if I may, if I may do the second, and just again, to underline to everyone the incredible work that Bruce and his team in Human Services are doing in getting people into housing. And, I mean, the focus on homelessness has just been incredible during the COVID crisis, so just want to make sure to mention that.
Here, here. Thank you for mentioning that. He's doing great work, and they all are right now. So I do have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under medical examiner, number 45, the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grants and Appropriation Adjustment. Under procurement, number 46 is the staff parking lot upgrades to a stray at jail. On public defense services, 47, amend title IV-E federal entitlement funding contract. The board will now consider items 45 through 47.
So moved.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second? Thank you Supervisor Guyardo. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. For public health, 48 through 50, amend IGAs with Arizona Department of Health Services, 51. Contract with Valleywise Health Medical Center, 52. Grant award from Arizona Department of Health Services, 53. IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services, 54 through 55. Notice of awards for grant funds from Centers for Disease Control, Health Resources and Services Administration. 56 is a purchase order for IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services. The board will now consider items 48 through 56. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a standoff?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move.
Supervisor Guyardo, thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Now, under transportation, 57, agreement with Anthem Community Council. 58, bid and award for roadway construction project, McKellup's Road, SR 101 to Alma School. 59, declare right-of-way parcels as excess on Dobbin's Road and 47th Avenue. 60 is a transfer of property, or I'm sorry, project right-of-way to the City of Almirage. 61 is an easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. Under industrial development, item 62 is a resolution for the issuance of bonds for the benefit of legacy traditional schools. The board will now consider items 57 through 62.
Mr. Chair, move approval of items 57 through 62, and if I might make a short comment.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from Supervisor Chukri. Thank you Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 57 is an item with an agreement between Maricopa County and the Anthem Community Council for some maintenance responsibilities. And just wanted to take this opportunity to thank, the Community Council does an incredible job up there in Anthem, a great partner, and does so much to benefit the community. And they actually have a new executive director out there, John Bowman, so wanted to recognize him as well. We had the chance to virtually meet recently and had a good discussion, and look forward to working with him.
Awesome. Good. Great things happen in your community. So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under setting of hearings, Clerk of the Board, 63, submitted petitions to form the Ocatillo Estates Irrigation Water Delivery District. Under transportation, number 64 is a patent easement abandonment, road file PAB-0129. The board will now consider items 63 and 64.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Chukri. Do I have a second? Thank you Supervisor Guyardo. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under the consent agenda, Clerk of the Board, 65, duplicate warrants. 66, the treasures, collections, and investment summary. 67 is an annual collections and delinquency report tax collection. 68 is settlement resolution of property tax cases and claims. We will be skipping then to item number 70, which is secured, unsecured tax roll corrections. The board will now consider items 65 through 68 and 70.
So moved, Mr. Chairman. I've got a question on number 65, if I might.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Supervisor Chukri.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I read through these, and I get baffled, especially from coming from a business background, when you see these amounts, in particular, the $372,000 for CDW government. Are these checks that are, just aren't received, or are they lost or misplaced? Is there, I know it varies, but when you see a school district and schools needing money, that's a lot of money to not have.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, yes, it can be one or the other. Either they say they never received the check, or they have lost the check. These items that come on the duplicate warrant list, they go through a two-step process to make sure. So first of all, there's a check to see if they have been cashed. Then there is a stop order check, and then they go on here. So, we sometimes don't know if the mail was just simply misdirected.
Okay.
Or if somebody in the office forgot and put it in their drawer.
Okay. You understand the point, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah.
And we do this routinely. I'm not trying to make an example out of anyone, but it's fascinating to me.
Yes.
And I don't know if there's a way to better the system. You can't do everything UPS or FedEx. It'd be incredibly expensive, but just a comment.
So, maybe to do a little bit of extra work, Paige, would you start working a little bit harder for your boss to run these things down?
Well, I think she should drive them. Be a driver.
That would probably work the best.
Yeah. Okay. We'll work on that.
No, great catch. Thank you for asking that. There's all sorts of processes that are a little bit hard to figure sometimes, but thank you for doing what you guys are doing. So, great question. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We'll now then go back to item number 69 under the consent agenda, under Clerk of the Board. 69 is an offer on tax-deed land parcel. Fran, has there been any additional bids have been received at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I've just checked with the people on my staff that are checking online. There have been no additional bids offered, and I have not heard from anyone that there would be an additional bid. The person who has put in a bid, this particular piece of, small piece of property is adjacent to his home. So it's most likely just something that was left off in the surveying process.
Okay. Great. Very good. Thank you for that. Then, if there are no further bids, the board will now consider item number 69.
I'm sorry I couldn't get it up higher, Mr. Chairman, but it is in my district, and I will vote to accept this and make a motion to, excuse me, accept this.
Okay.
An amount of offering $50.
Thank you, Steve. Did I hear an offer, too?
[laughing]
Okay. We have a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Under the addendum, Board of Supervisors, 71, CARES Act expenditure. Under Parks and Recreation, number 72, is an Arizona Game and Fish Heritage Fund Trail Camera Grant. The board will now consider items 71 and 72.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of items 71 and 72 with a brief comment.
Great. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jack Sellers. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Gates.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number 71 is just one item where we are approving as a board, items under the CARES Act. Some are suggesting that we're not spending that money. This is 1.6 million on this item alone, and part of it goes to the Daisy Mountain Fire District for their COVID reimbursement. And they are, for a lot of my district, they're our fire department. So they're doing incredible work. Much has been said about all the fires that they were engaged in, but as well, doing a lot to help with our COVID response. And, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for your leadership on this and working not only with them, but with other of our fire districts. And I think it's a great partnership and a great use of the CARES funding.
Awesome. Very good. Do I have a, do I have a, did I get a second already?
Yeah.
For Sellers.
Yeah, before I say thank you, and of course, to my chief that continues to stay in, I think we've talked about just the important role that fire districts serve in all of our communities. Some of us have very large municipalities with a fire department, but some of us have wide stretches of unincorporated land where fire districts serve as that important function. So, I appreciate the reach out to the county, to the fire districts, for them to participate. You know, they had to fill out forms. It has to be audible, and it is truly items that are going to the fight with this pandemic. So, I thank all of them for participating, and it's great to see the money flowing out in the community where we are taking care of emergency response and the people doing it, so, and keeping them protected. So, thanks for bringing it up. Being that I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. All right. We will now recess, I'm having problems with my tongue today. We will now recess as the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors and convene as the Library District Board of Directors. Under Library District, 73 through 74 is donations, or are donations. The board will now consider items 73 and 74.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with a big thank you to these two individuals, or for these two donations.
Great. Thank you, Steve. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'm going to give it to my vice chairman, Jack Sellers, on that one. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Still under Board of Supervisors, 75, oh, sorry. Let's go backward. We will now adjourn as the Library District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Under the Board of Supervisors is the item number 75, is the public comment, period. Fran, do you have anything to report regarding public comment, email responses? And I know that we have had a lot this past week, so hopefully you'll touch on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we've had over 1,600 emails that have come in under agenda comments. And mainly, these comments have fallen into the following categories: Things dealing with the mask regulations, both for and against. Most of the things dealing with schools have to do with questions about schools opening, but also some concerns about whether or not masks have to be worn in the schools for both the staff and the children. There are some general comments regarding COVID, just about how the pandemic is going, and if there are any thoughts about relieving some of the regulations. There were a few comments about Black Lives Matter, and there were a couple comments about animal care and control. And we will make sure that all of the supervisor offices receive the list of all of the comments so that you can review them.
Thank you. It truly is important that if people would like to engage in the public comment period, the sad part about this pandemic is, you know, this building is shut down, and we're practicing personal spacing. So I appreciate it. And yes, please, make sure that all of the board members get the comments of what people would like us to know about what's going on in their community. So I appreciate it very much. Okay. Okay, under item 76 is the supervisor summary of current events. I will turn towards, did I start with you last time, Joy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, but I have nothing today. Thank you.
Okay, tried. I will go to the people that are on the dais with me today, Steve Chukri. Any comments? Okay, great. Supervisor Gates, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, a lot going on right now, busy time. Next Tuesday, September 8th, I'll participate in another one of the HeroZona Bridge forums. I know some of my colleagues have been involved in these great discussions about social justice and how elected officials can get engaged in that. This one's going to have kind of a sports focus, so representatives of the major professional teams in Maricopa County plus ASU, so that'll be a great discussion, really looking forward to that. Then later next week, actually on September 11th, I'll be up in Anthem, not virtual, in person, looking forward to it, at the Representatives Town Hall there. So an opportunity to speak about what we're doing here in Maricopa County and hear what's on people's minds up there in Anthem. And then the next day, on September 12th, I am hosting a blood donation event in Sunny Slope along with Senator Kate Murphy McGee, and also my successor on the Phoenix City Council, Deborah Stark. So great opportunity, and if people want to donate and be involved, it's going to be 11 to 2 on the 12th. And you can go onto vitalent.org to sign up or contact our office, and we can get you more information on that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you Supervisor Gates. And I don't want to color anybody's comments, but this person is known, I think, much better by Supervisor Gallardo than he is myself. So I hate to put you on your spot or cut into your time, so I'm going to let you decide to talk about it if you wish. Supervisor Gallardo, I'm looking for comments, but I was wondering if you wanted to touch on the loss of Mr. Ronnie Lopez this week.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it is, it is a great tragedy. I actually had a long conversation with my dear friend on the city council, Ms. Laura Many of us elected officials, kind of from Laura Pastor and my generation, we owe everything when it comes to our elective leadership roles to Ronnie Lopez. Ronnie Lopez is just a pillar in the community. He not only served as the Chief of Staff to Governor Bruce Babbitt, he helped found one of the nation's largest nonprofit organization, Hispanic organizations, Chicanas Protagonist Fund. He has just been, he helped also get one of our fellow colleagues, Congressman Ed Pastor, or at the time Supervisor Ed Pastor, elected to the United States Congress. But he has just been, just a great, great human being. I've known him for so long, he would be one that we would pick up the phone and talk to and ask questions, and he'd give us advice and guidance, and he was just a great individual and just a dear friend. His whole family, Angie, my sincerest condolences. I sent her a card a couple days ago, but it's just a huge loss. And if you talk to anyone of my generation, I can tell you, anyone who's in some type of an elective political role, they would contribute their success to Ronnie Lopez. He helped us all. So to Angie and the entire family, my deepest condolences to the loss of Ronnie Lopez. He was just a great individual and just a servant to the community. He, there's, you know, two things he loved, there's only a couple of things he loved more than anything, and that was his family and his community. So, and he showed it with the work. So my condolences to Angie and the entire Lopez family. I also want to just remind folks, Mr. Chairman, Labor Day coming up in a couple days. Wish all our employees a great three-day weekend and relaxation, but let's also want to remind folks to keep in mind, we're still in the middle of a pandemic, and, you know, we have to continue to social distance and wash our hands, use hand sanitizers, let's wear our mask as we exit out this weekend. But I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday, or happy Labor Day weekend, and let's keep mindful, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. We want to, we want to make sure everyone stays safe and able to come back on Tuesday healthy and continue to do the great service they do for the people of Maricopa County.
Great, thank you Supervisor Gallardo. Mr. Vice Chairman, Jack Sellers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it has been kind of a busy time. I attended the MAGG Transportation Policy Committee meeting and the Valley Metro Regional Public Transit Authority Board meetings. But I also attended my second bridge forum that was held in Tempe, and I do in fact plan to attend the one next Tuesday as well, that'll be just down the street from here. So a very, very interesting organization, and I think that they are attempting to move things in a very positive direction. The other thing I'll mention is that I was proud to represent Maricopa County at the Rio Reimagined Ceremony that was held yesterday. It was a celebration of recognizing that we became the 20th Urban Waters Federal Partnership. So, you know, this was, it was started a long time ago and had involvement of Senator McCain and other key people here. But Maricopa County has played a key role in helping to develop the vision for what we would like to see that become, and it's exciting now to have a federal partnership to help us move that forward.
Great, thank you.
That's all, that's all my comments.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair. Just a comment I'd like to make, it felt really good last night. I was in Sun City, and I got a chance to participate in a get-out-the-vote type of thing, but this was really cool because it was in Sun City, a retirement community, and people brought their grandchildren, and maybe even great-grandchildren in there. And they gave me the opportunity to talk a little bit about the county, the role that we have, talk about how important elections are, the incredible right that they will have at the age of 18, where they get to vote for whoever they choose to vote for. It gave me a time to reflect on my first presidential vote, which was, I was just telling Bill Gates about this, Ronald Reagan, but second term. Okay, I'm not that old. It wasn't the first term, it was the second term. So got a chance to talk to them, and I told them that I'll never forget that, especially I had the chance on a close-up trip to meet President Reagan when I was a senior in high school. So everything, everything kind of ties up, and I hope that they do take that. Another interesting thing was there was a person there that worked for a congressional office that talked about how great it was for him to start at a ground level as a volunteer, and now he enjoys, but also is paid as being part of a political process, representing a Congresswoman. And that seemed to brighten the eyes because there's a lot of 14-year-olds looking for what they want to do in life and jobs, and I thought that was, that was a great, great speech made there, too. So that being said, again, Joy, and to all of you, thank you for knocking it out of the park during this pandemic. I think the county is performing extremely well. We all have decisions to make, sometimes on the fly, but other times we get to study the issue a little bit and make some, make some key decisions that nobody really understands how much thought goes into the decisions that we make every day. So thank you for your staff and your workers, the other electeds that get to participate in this, and we are, we are going to emerge through this pandemic victorious. So that's it. So thank you, everybody, for joining us today, and we are adjourned.